Welcome everybody to this meeting at Cal Poly. Welcome, invited. Thank everybody for coming tonight. I'd like to start off with our invocation, Pastor Josh Trelo, if you can come forward please. How are you doing Josh? Thanks for being here tonight. Check that microphone is on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and city officials. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight to say the prayer of the meeting. While praying and thinking about tonight's invocation, a story from the Bible came to my attention. It was about King Solomon. King Solomon gave God an offering. And it was probably one of the greatest offerings, sacrifice in the Bible. Because he did this, that is how they worshiped in the Bible. Because he did this, God was pleased with him. He was so pleased with King Solomon. That he said, Second Chronicles, you can look it up later, chapter one. He said, Solomon, what do you want? He, God, gave Solomon a blank check. Like, what do you want? And could you only imagine God saying, what do you want? But it's amazing what Solomon said. Solomon asked not for riches, not for gold, he asked for wisdom. That's what Solomon asked for. He said, Lord, give me wisdom so that I might lead your people. And that's what we're asking for tonight. What we need more than anything in our world today is wisdom. We have so much knowledge, we're the most knowledgeable generation ever. We have Suri telling us where to go and Alexa playing our songs. We have the Nest thermostats, we have smartphones in our pockets. We have electric cars that drive themselves. We are flooded with knowledge from what we need is wisdom. What's the difference, you might say? Knowledge is knowing what needs to be done. Wisdom is knowing the best way to do it. And when to do it. How do we get wisdom? Not more degrees, classes, lectures, those are all great, wonderful. We want that. The Bible tells us in James 1 and 5, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God. The way to get wisdom is to ask God. With our world, nation, and cities in chaos, what we need more than anything is the wisdom of God. So today we pray that God will lead you as council members. That the wisdom of God will guide you and direct you. Give you the right vision, give you the right plans for our city. We pray that the council with the wisdom of God would help you with decisions and choices that would affect not only our present generation, but our future city of Lindsay. We need the wisdom of the Almighty God to help us every day. Let's pray. Today, God, we don't ask you for anything great except your wisdom. We pray wisdom upon our leaders, we pray it upon our city officials. God, we need wisdom to not only know what to do, but to know how to do it and when to do it. Timing is everything. God, we pray that you would help our officials, help our mayor, help the city council today as they're making decisions that would affect our future generations. It would affect our city. We pray that you would give them wisdom as you gave Solomon. We're asking you, God, we need your wisdom today in a world that's chaotic. In a world that has problems on every hand, tornadoes, disasters, war, crime, drugs. We need your wisdom. And we pray you would do that today, God. Give our officials wisdom to lead our city.
Now we want to pledge allegiance to our council member of course.
The two legions, the I of the United States of America. And to very powerful constituents, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Serna? Mayor Serna? Mayor Protem Flores? Councilmember Saros? Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Mr. Villarreal? Here, all present.
Thank you. You're the prover for tonight's agenda.
A motion from Councilmember Saros, a second from Councilmember Villarreal, all in favor?
Moving on to public comment. The public is invited to comment on any subject of the jurisdiction of the Lindsay City Council. Please note that speakers that wish to comment on regular items or public hearings on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to speak or public comment if that item is discussed by the mayor. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person for thirty minutes for the total comment period unless otherwise indicated by the mayor. The public may also choose to submit a comment before the meeting via email. Public comments received via email will be distributed to the council prior to the start of the meeting and incorporated into the official minutes. However, they will not be read aloud. Understanding all matters presented or the public comment cannot be acted upon by the council at this time. So anyone wishing to make public comment, let me stand.
Thank you.
Well. Yeah, my name is Lori Cardoza and I'm from Tulare. Thank you for having me. I'm not sure if this is quite the right place, but I was invited by a few people. So I thought I'd just come and basically make an introduction. And I'm going to keep a brief, I know I kind of live in this. I'm typically sitting in those chairs. So I took a good out of this role. So I appreciate your time. My name is Lori Cardoza and I'm in Tulare and I'm up for reelection for COS Board, Board Four. And I am your representative for COS. I've been on the board for twenty years. And I can honestly say it's been a privilege and an honor to serve at the college. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself and a couple of things at the college and then I'll wrap it up. I was born in Tulare, raised in Tipton. I am proud to be daughter of two immigrants and first to attend and graduate from college in my family. And I will say that COS is where maybe that starts. So I owe a lot to COS. And I feel like this has been a great way for me to get back. I graduated Cal Poly after attending COS, moved back to Tulare and I've been there ever since. I've been married to my husband David for thirty blissful years. And we have four boys and ages twenty-four to seventeen. I'm almost done with those teenage years. And then two of my boys are graduates of COS. So I'm proud of that too. I would like to just say while I've been on the board, I'm most proud of the growth that we've experienced in twenty years. We've been through some ups and downs. In twenty years, I've experienced three superintendents, you know, budget issues, all sorts of things that we had to work through as a board. And I honestly say that I'm now three or four have already retired off the board. But I will say every single one of them has been a mentor to me. We've been respectful of each other and we've gotten so much done because of our ability to work together. So I'm real proud of that. And I would like to say that I am endorsed by my four board members that I currently serve with today. I would also just like everyone to know that if I would like to serve one more term, we are building a university center in Visalia, the Visalia area passed that on this past year. And that groundbreaking will occur in the next year. And it's the closest we're going to get to a university. Since we didn't get her set, which we shouldn't. But anyways, we're going to put a university center there. Hope to bring in four or five of our local, not local, but close enough universities that our students will have access to a fully improved. So those are the things that will be done in the next four years. And I'm just here to introduce myself and say so far, every time I've been to Lindsay, everybody's been so great. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. You're in front just so.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Warren. I'm here in Lindsay. Lindsay, I need to know is you sharing with me that this week is National Poetry. 4H is one of America's largest organizations from youth ages five to eighteen. I'm a member, president of 4H. I've been a member for two years now. Projects that I participate in are art and crafts, photography, spine, tingle setting. And this year I have an ebony phoenix wallet. I work on these projects. I can exhibit my complete projects at both a volleyball fair in May and the Tenerife Valley Fair in September. In my art and crafts project, this year I made an upcycled brook creep and photography activity in five colors. In my spine project, I raised four hogs. And in my volley project, I made orders a horse shirer. Another project that our club offers are sheep, meat goat, beef, poultry, rabbits, plant science, archery, and public speaking. We have our meetings at some extent school in Stratton, in Stratton. And we meet on the first Tuesday of August. I have a flyer with all the information. I also participate in the following committees. Pancake breakfast, harvest party, community service, refreshments, Christmas parade float, December holiday party, and end of the year party. This Saturday, we'll be having a check finding pancake breakfast at the volleyball fair. From six AM to ten. The tickets are eight dollars in advance and nine dollars at the door. I have tickets. Anyone who'd like to get some off the menu. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question. I just think what you do is awesome. Tell your busy little beat. And I hope to see some of your, maybe your photography, coming. I hope you have.
I have a question. Can I get a ticket right now? I wish you'd say they were.
My tickets?
Yeah.
Eight dollars.
Eight dollars. Great job. Good job. Were you nervous?
That was a calm slithering. You were great. Is there, is there any other one? Anybody else wanting to leave public comment? I can stop the ball.
Can we get your name one more time? What was the last name?
Orbit, Orbit.
Thank you. Orbit, got it.
Is there any questions for? I know she's involved in a lot of things.
I just feel super happy that you're representing Lindsay at expense. So super full term funding.
Maybe you'll be the mayor one day. You're doing great.
All right, guys. If there's no more questions, we'll move on. We'll move on to anybody else wishing to make public comment. There are many sections not closed. Moving on to council reports. I don't have anything to report. Sorry. I just want to welcome everybody and say thank you for being here. And thank you for having the urge to come in and talk. It took a lot. We can start with listening.
I agree. I don't have much to report, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys, this Friday, we're having our volleyball versus Exeter. We're all dead versus Exeter all night. So it's open to the public. So I'm inviting everybody to show your support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boston, of course.
I have nothing to report, but I'd like to add that if you give something to me.
I also don't have anything to report, but I'm reminded that tomorrow is the Spanish Town Hall of Fame. So I remind everyone that tomorrow is the Spanish Town Hall of Honor of Wonders.
No, I don't have anything to report, but it's good to see so many faces out there. And that you're very brave to come out here and do that. Very brave. Very clear. We understood you. You didn't have any questions, not too many questions, but you did really, really, really. I did go to the boxing, but I'm not boxing, just to check it out. Pretty awesome place. It looks small from the outside, but it's really not. They were pretty busy because they had a scrimmage going on. The volleyball came down and they were boxing. Man, they're pretty good. And I just love how everybody gets together, all the kids, and they're walking and cheering each other on. It's really awesome. From what I understand, one of them did go to the nationals. But Missy, do you have any more information on that? Yeah, you know, he made it to the quarterfinals, I believe, and then lost that round. But he went pretty far, you know, I mean, he was representing Lindsay. And then you know what? I'm also predicting this to come on the mic. I went and got a facial at that Bellamia Civics. I recommend that. I mean, it's amazing. I mean, six, every six weeks I'm going. He says a lot of male going there. Don't be shy. Go get a facial. You'll thank me.
Thank you for that. I'd also like to recognize one of my Civics Club students is here tonight. Welcome. We're going to move into staff updates and city services.
I'm well. Obviously, transitioning to a little new role for a while. If you can bear with me a little bit. You obviously have quite a few projects going on to city services. So I kind of hope to outline a few of those. First of which, probably the First of which, probably the biggest since you brought around town, the Flurry Football. Real project has started, uh that started last Monday, well underway. L S I B connected water lines along Flurry Road, there's some lines that walk foot hill, that's the service and agricultural companies to the north. The contractor has uh demolished the actual intersection, now a sewer's out. The road's been high here, trying to get that uh in care of. Starting on Monday the fourteenth, we've actually, that police department, and we're gonna have officers out there trying to help the traffic control. Staff update, so. Uh the entire project is asking if we completed six days, so that's still on, still on, so. Um another item that we've been working on is working with the police department, we're really trying to revocus on some of the quality life issues. We've gotten some reports of graffiti and some abandoned cars, we're kind of trying to focus on that. Uh one of which is the existing pressure washer that we have is about fifteen to twenty years old, that weren't the greatest. So we've been spray painting over graffiti, uh we've been spraying paint on existing graffiti. And so we're gonna look at some funding sources, see what we can do to try to get a high pressure washer. Uh so on, things that are like masonry, brick, um buildings, things like that, we could use that to basically remove the graffiti without damaging existing paint. Doesn't work on fences, we may have to continue with that, but that's something that we're exploring and we'll have us come back on. Um one of the other things I wanted to address was a question that came up at the last council meeting regarding the reselling corporate three ninety-six Oxford and three seventy-four Oxford. Uh so there was a question regarding those three properties. And if you're not familiar, it's within the umbrella of Will Suntree Packing House, which is three ninety-one. And so basically, there's two structures that are within that photo down the street. So off of Hermosa on the south side and off of Flurry on the north side, just west of Harper. The first street there is Oxford. Um the city transferred the, all that roadway to uh the packing house years ago. And so it's been shut off at Oxford Inn there. Well, there's those two structures that are accessed off of Second Street and they're zoned for light industrial. So I went back and found out that that zoning, zoning has existed since at least two thousand and four, where those structures have been zoned that way. Uh looked at what the process would be to amend that zoning. And really what we're looking at is one of two paths. Typically, that would be initiated by the property owner, uh they would, or the process that they can do with the city to change zone. They pay fees to the city to kind of explore. Um so CECL is the California Environmental Quality Act, there's a CECL report that needs to be done. And other planning issues, those fees typically run between about three to five thousand dollars, depending on the process. Um then it would come in front of the city council and it will, yeah, city council, whether or not to approve that. If that was done, we would also have to do an amendment or a general plan to, which kind of covers the use of properties throughout the city. Um within that, like I said, within that umbrella, there are all those two properties. So we'd have to decide if, if the city was gonna undertake that themselves, if it was a city-generated action, we would have to decide whether or not that is gonna be for both properties, if it's gonna be for one. Another consideration that we kind of looked at, with talking to the bureau with planning, is when you get in a spot zoning like that, kind of set a precedent, so it's something to keep in mind, if you have other properties that were in the city that um you know, we do it for one, now there's a question on, do we do it for others? So there's something to consider, so definitely something that we can come back to with with some council direction and thoughts.
Yeah, um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you know if that means uh when they be, did that, that they shut down the street, would that been legally?
So my, I tried to find some documents, just because I was trying to get the history and research. The, to be honest, I didn't know the answer on a lot of this stuff, so it was just a lot of, a lot of digging. My understanding is it was something similar to what was done over at the packing house over here off Key Brier, where the city transferred control of that to the uh, it was a council action, it was taken. Um so it, as to your question, I couldn't find the exact document for, for the one over on Hermosa, but I believe it was a similar process, it was a council action.
Right, because you know, back in those days, things aren't actually done the way they were supposed to have been done.
I wish I would have found the, the, and I would can continue digging, um but during the week that I've kind of been doing this, I I was not able to find the document, so I can continue digging, uh I
Why you done plenty, I won't leave you.
We have listened to it as well. But it's all, yeah. Because there was a lot of things done.
And I can continue looking, like just within, you know, I went back and found zoning maps actually in two thousand and four. So I went in basement, was looking for physical maps and things like that, so we, there wasn't a ten maybe to try to find.
This guy.
Alright.
Thank you, Ryan, appreciate it.
Uh moving on to five minutes, certain updates.
Good evening, Mayor Sarah, Mayor Brooklyn Floyd, and council members. Uh tonight, I just want to update you that next meeting, we will be providing the unaudited actuals. The unaudited actuals are the only time of the year that you'll see actual uh data. And it's provided the full picture of the year for the previous year. So at this next meeting, you will see all of last year, your Indy Fund balance going into this year's budget. Because the budget is only projected down for the lifetime. So you'll see unaudited actuals at our next meeting. I wanted to provide an H C D fund status update. The total amount at the beginning of the year was six hundred nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight. We were um approving the budget for that in April. On um May fourteen, we came to council with a list of projects and by a law, we had to get half of the projects underway or committed by September twenty-sixth, we met that deadline. By obligating the funds for the wastewater treatment piping and the replacement for the pump, we're constructing the pickleball courts and rehabilitation of the skate park that's currently taking place. The budget continues to be worked on. Um and on target for presentation at the October twenty-second meeting, water, sewer, and refuse are the primary accounts we are due at this point in conjunction with the Prop two eighteen process. And the public outreach is going well for the Prop two eighteen process. I've met with um all of our main stakeholders, going to uh Rotary and uh Juana's, all the different groups that we have in our city, continuing to do that, and then I wanted to remind everyone that um Sarah's already did that tomorrow night is going to be our town hall meeting in Spanish. And I would be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh good evening, everybody, uh so this will be brief, just want to give you guys an update. Obviously, Ryan has graciously kept in, helped us out with City Services. Um we are continuing to fly the position for the recruitment efforts for the director role. Uh we just re-blew it beginning of this month, uh it is gonna run through October thirty-first as of right now. Um by that point, we'll see what updates have come through, I'll start doing sort of reviews as we, as they come out, I do review them, but as you guys all know, it's a very difficult market right now, especially the public work sector. Um and then we did go ahead this time around and posted it on the American Public Works Association website. So it is picking up a lot more traction from getting more um candidate eyes on it that are more qualified for that type of role, it's just a matter of kind of getting into buying Lindsay and getting here, so that's my, my next task, but I'll keep you guys close as we go. Any questions, Ryan?
Appreciate you, I think. Good evening. Um as you can see, it's uh October breast cancer awareness month. All the peak. Sure, you'll see a lot of the officers that are are gone.
Yes, alright.
Thanks, Lance. Um you'll see a lot of the officers that are, are running around, most all apartments, all over the place that are running around with all the peak. And it's to support breast, uh breast cancer awareness. Um it's very close to me, uh my wife is a survivor, so I do that, um done for years. And so all the proceeds that are generated from selling the patches and stuff are go to uh different uh research for breast cancer. Um the kind of piggyback off of what Ryan said, uh we did put out a social media blast on abandoned cars, uh cars that are left standing on roadways. Um cars that don't run, expired tags, just the ice swords that we see throughout the town. Um we wanted to get it out, instead of just going out and start towing cars, uh citing cars and stuff like that, uh we wanted to put it out on social media. Uh we'll also be contacting people knocking on doors when we can, uh giving people opportunity to move cars um before they are um ticketed or or removed or things like that. There's, there's different areas of that, uh seventy-two hours, cars that actually are hardly disassembled. Uh cars that are in excess of six months of tags, there's lots of different things that um that are involved in that. So we'll be working on that. Um we have recently uh finally switched over to the WEX Fleet uh management system for fueling, which is gonna, should save us a tremendous amount of money uh on fuel. Uh that is all up and running now. Um Uh also the graffiti stuff with what Ryan, what Ryan said, we're tracking it through the PD with uh taking reports and photographs for uh possibly uh catching somebody in the event, we have all the pictures, we can match those up, we can make a case with the DA's office and charge the people that are responsible for it, because a lot of things, it's the same ones that are just doing it over and over. Uh we need to get ahead of this, get it taken down, covered, not covered up, taken off, covered up, you forgot the paint. Uh which I don't like paint because I'd rather it stay off. Uh but with it, real good Wednesday, so get it off. So um also met with uh Paul Rooney today, superintendent of schools. Uh kind of reapplied ourselves with each other, with each other for a while. Uh just to kind of talk about what's going on, how we're gonna approach things and do the things that we do together from the schools to uh law enforcement. Uh I'm gonna be uh meeting with Adriana probably next week, the school's back in. To visit all the school sites and talk with all the principals and uh everybody to the schools that I can. Just to have them all for the face with the, the person. Uh it's been three years since I was here, so some will remember, some won't, but I just want to make sure everybody knows why I am here. And I think that's all I, all I have right now. Any questions? So, I go, thank you for giving thanks for being here. Recreation.
The model you're in. This one.
Alright, good evening, council. Um this reminder to council and committee, we have our food truck event this Saturday at Wellness Center parking lot. Uh from five thirty to nine. And we have eight food vendors, uh Bear Garden provided by Orange Bar. Uh live entertainment by Tina Marie, just me. Uh so come on out, enjoy. Gonna be about eighty degrees rather than a hundred and five, so it worked out perfect, I found it that way. Um so we have that coming this Saturday, at the pickleball courts, they're still being worked on, we're waiting on some dating. And then once that is completed, you'll get an email from me um on opening day ribbon cutting, so I thought I had.
Sounds good, quick question for you, I know a lot of these kids are gonna need um signatures. Um who would be the more the contact for them to have their
Per Saturday?
Per Saturday.
Um I'll recommend that to be there about three-ish, three thirty. Um three thirty about nine thirty, they come see me, I'll be out there with some staff. Um hoping to get at least ten volunteers um from the high school, the tenth learners. I sent an email, email out to all the learners we uh spoke to a couple of weeks ago at the high school. We'll kind of boot that lunchtime, so we're hoping some of them will come out. I know um Juana's, the Rotary group, they have their key clubs um in groups at the high school, so um hopefully we'll have a good turnout, uh have a setup, table, chairs, trash, all the fun stuff, so.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you. Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council, like, I feel like the bar has been set pretty high, so I have to work with our representative from the forums, uh and all of the department, yes, I don't uh, I don't have a lot comparatively, but um on Thursday, September twenty-sixth, the Madre de Silva, Megan Eaton and myself, attended the Skoya Tourism Council's Fall twenty twenty-four Council Year College at Galaxy Theaters in Tulare. This event highlights the importance of tourism in Tulare County visitor traffic to not only Tulare County, but the national parks. There were several people who attended, they had an opportunity to mingle around, look at some uh community booths that were there, gather information about local amenities, and they also had a chance to sample some of the products that were locally made. We enjoyed at one point the comfort of the retirees during the presentation, showcasing all of the cities in Tulare County. And then I also had the opportunity to just give a brief update to the audience and um let them know about the exciting developments here in the city of Lindsay and all that we have to offer visitors. Later that afternoon, I attended the Porterville Agro, Porterville Men's Agro Business Luncheon at the Veterans Memorial Building. Uh hosted by U K, who graciously invited me to be your guest for the event. It was great just to network with some of the local businessmen, I had opportunity to meet some new people. And uh gave us some business cards, so it was a really fun event. On Thursday, October the third, Ryan Hanks and I attended T X twenty twenty-four Local Motion Awards in Woodlake, where we were honored to receive on behalf of the city of Lindsay the Pedestrian Bike Project Award for the Lindavista Rehabilitation Loop Project. And so that was a great recognition, that hats off to our City Services group for delivering that project. And it's, it's been a long time coming. Um as has already been mentioned, we have our Spanish Town Hall meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at sixteen, so we will encourage all of you to attend that if possible. Last Friday, we had our first Friday coffee talk at the Wellness Center, the turnout wasn't as good as what we hoped for, but we we did have a few folks stop by and we had some, some good conversations, some good coffee. And uh we're already looking forward to the next event. Yesterday, I met with the Caltrans Local Assistance District sixteen. And they had reached out to discuss how Caltrans can support the city of Lindsay in pursuing state and federal funding for community improvement projects. During the meeting, they shared a, a list of various funding opportunities. And they emphasized, which I really appreciated, clear commitment to assisting us in securing any and all available grant funds for our city. So I'll be bringing more information back to you as it becomes available. And then yesterday, I also spoke with Carlo Calhoun, Deputy Director for CSET, she's currently serving as Acting Director. She was uh following up on a previous discussion, the CSET had had the former city administration regarding the possibility of opening a location in Lindsay using one of the own city vacant buildings for their office. Um I'll, I'll be speaking to you a little bit more on that topic later on in the meeting. Uh she did indicate that there is potential grant funding available through CSET to rehab properties. If they decided to um to go that route, so again, I'll be bringing some more information back to you later date on that, but I think that's all I have to report to you. Yeah, okay, no question, question, come on down. Any questions, anyone?
Now, I'm just happy that Lindavist about recognized. Because that, they had waited for so long. Well, um remember, Donna, when we were knocking on doors when we first uh were running Well, um remember, Yana, but we were knocking on doors when we first uh were running for city council. We promised them that we would bring it up, and they said all, all the, all city council, all these promises of that, and it never happened. And this time it happened, and I'm so grateful. We waited so long.
It's a great project.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. Thank you for the update. Moving on to consent calendar, which items approved and more motion or less items pulled for discussion, there will be no separate discussion for each item unless you've thought of it. In which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar to discuss and vote upon by a separate motion. Let's see, one wish to pull in that calendar.
Martin Jones, could I be sent a calendar?
My second.
We have a motion from Mayor Proton Flores, a second from Mayor Serna. Councilmember Villarreal.
Hi.
Councilmember Saros.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Motion carries five to zero for the consent calendar.
All right, moving on to action item eleven point one. You mentioned rip the boss special net permit and fee waiver uh submitted by Ryan.
Hello. So as the mayor just said, I'm here uh in front of you regarding special event permit twenty-four dash zero eight, and this is for the fourteenth annual root cook-off event that is being held on November second. Uh the event is, there's gonna be about forty entries. We are looking at closing down Honolulu from Mirage to Sweet Brier. Um everything in their application is the same as last year, so it's the same traffic pattern, it is the same uh street closures. They plan on having a thirty-foot stage that's gonna be directly in the intersection of Honolulu and Elmwood. It'll be facing, it'll be on the north side of the intersection, facing southbound. There'll also be another sixteen-foot uh stage area directly in front of the Orange Bar. Um there will be alcohol sales on scene through the Orange Bar. Um we have received their liquor permit as well as their uh indemnity for the license. This is a special type event three, so it's a uh five hundred dollar base rate plus staff time. So included in this is a fee waiver, the estimate right now that staff time and the permit fee is about nine hundred dollars. So it counts as approve the event and approve the fee waiver, that's what we're looking at right now. Uh the event starts at four o'clock in the morning, that we will be setting up, the actual judgment that we start at noon, and it'll end at five. Uh they're estimating about one thousand people, which I would say depending on, you know, people coming and going, it's about what we had last year. The car show is directly to the south of the stage, so on Elmwood, just south of Honolulu. We've got uh bathrooms that have been confirmed as well in valley, uh it's confirmed that are involved. So I would submit that for public comment and for council. Unless you have any questions.
I don't have any, but I just think it's a great event, um and the money that they generate goes back to the the kids' fund, that's the main reason, so I think it's all a fun, all around great event. Uh any questions?
I agree.
Especially on them.
Yeah.
What's that?
Public comment.
Since we're, you're adding questions, I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody wishing to make a public comment? Just one board at this time.
On the event?
Yeah.
I wasn't planning on it.
Come on up.
My name is Denise. I am on the the root cook-off uh uh board member. Uh I've been doing this for about four years, uh so privileged to do, I get so excited every time it comes uh it comes up. We pretty much plan it uh six months before we start planning. It's a really great nonprofit. I know just alone, this year we donated so much back to our uh the kids in our community. Um but we gave out five thousand dollars in scholarships, um plus uh we give back to Healthy Star, we do the boys' basketball, I'm sorry, uh the boys' baseball team, girls' uh basketball. Um and we also helped out the lighting the the Lindsay Theater.
Yeah.
So I it there's just so much more um how I say, there's more um
Christmas donations.
Uh yeah, especially the Christmas donations, I mean, I'll forgive that, uh the I that is the reason why this whole uh thing started was for the um the Christmas um for the kids in our community to receive a a toy, picture with Santa long before maybe even part of doing this, but I I really enjoy it, it's a really great event. Um ribs everywhere, so if you guys found it upcoming, please uh let tell someone happens. Question.
So there's forty entries, is that the most you guys have?
We, the most we've had in the year that I participated in is forty.
Of course.
Of course. Yeah, so.
There's more ribs.
More ribs.
More ribs.
Yeah, more ribs. No, we hope to have them. Uh this is always. Or it's always.
Questions, Chris?
No, thank you for giving us that highlight. Um I know about the ribs this podcast, so I'm happy to um see a lot of old friends, new people, the Spanish movies, the towns, the different events. And so I'm glad that you came up here and talked about it's not just that event, they go to, it's it's actually so much more. Yes, right, go back to the kids, you know, the toys, the scholarships. So that's important, that that gets out, so that when people, you know, in the community, they know that that money goes to the, you know, to the, to the, uh you know, donations to the community. We also donate to Happy Breakfast after the the Christmas parade and the Lindsay Tech Drive.
And they also donate to all and also to ESPN.
Yeah, it's a really good, a lot of it will go back to where it should be. So we talk to that, you guys. A lot of us. And a lot of their place. Yes, TV, barbecuers, uh
I know.
Bye.
Shuttle tickets for now, right?
I know, um we are planning to have a lot more this year during the event, because usually we sell free, like um at the bar or ducky hot pits, and we just kind of sell within the community, but we don't have like a designated place, but it at the event is where we do sell the most, so this year we are planning to um have more. So get there early, get the light early too, get the light early. The ticket seller. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Hearing them sections now close. Guys, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, yeah, good, we have a plain one.
My second.
We have a motion from Mayor Proton Flores, second from Councilmember Villarreal, Councilmember Saros.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Serna.
All right.
Motion carries five to zero.
Looking forward to the agenda.
Well, Larry, next one.
Action item eleven point two. The League Will Send Annual Conference Proposed Resolution. Uh naked submitted by naked.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to do a quick overview of the resolution that um our voting delegates will be voting on at the annual conference, which is in a couple, is that your weekly presentation? It's the week on the sixteenth of the eighth. Um there's only one resolution that's submitted, so we're not passing the resolution, we're deciding the city stance on the resolutions for the voting delegate, we've got some number of Sarahs for the primary. Um so the name of the resolution is fair and equal treatment of all government officials at all levels submitted by the city of Lindora. Um the following cities of Arcadia, Zusa, Levar, Alameda, and Branch of Palos Verdes have all filled out the um a letter in support of this, and it's basically saying that what applies to one should apply to all, um and they're speaking about in terms of local versus state government. Um there are some things where like the Brown Act, for example, will apply to both local but not necessarily levels to state. And so this is just asking, um see, not the Brown Act example there. Um they talked about the Political Reform Act in terms of contribution limits. CEQA, um eighty-five seventy-one, which is about offices and things like that. And so the resolution is calling on the governor and the California legislators to develop a policy, practice, and procedure for firing the legislative activities that uh applies to one, should apply to the rest as well. Uh you can see the actual language is there. So what we're asking is for council to discuss what you think the voting delegate, how you think the voting delegate should vote. Don't get away from what we like, so.
I um my personal position, I support it. I mean, I think the resolution is clear that says it applies to one applies to all, and just because the legislature does something. Uh everyone should do it equally, even all around. I didn't see any major discrepancy or outliers. Uh seem pretty standard, like the language.
Interesting, but I want to hear you.
Any other thoughts?
No, I agree.
With all that consistency, yeah.
So everybody, so.
So voting to support the resolution is not there.
Our motion to support.
Second.
I'd love a word too. If there is a second thing.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mayor Serna, second by Councilmember Saros, Councilmember Villarreal.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Proton Flores.
Hi.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, council.
That, moving on to item eleven point three, bringing with DL Friday Night Market for services related to the Friday Night Market. Damon.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh this is an item that was carried over from the last meeting, just having to bring everyone up to speed, we're all familiar with the Friday Night Market, and a longstanding event here in the city of Lindsay that draws in thirty-five thousand people each week. Gets a lot of recognition throughout the valley. Just today, ironically, they got a call from another city near the valley who is looking to potentially mimic what you're doing on Friday nights. I told them we wouldn't give them our secrets, but uh they're very interested in trying to do something similar to our Friday Night Market. Um so this has been a longstanding event, but just taking this back a couple of years, on February the twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two, an agreement which was in the city of Lindsay, the DL Friday Night Market for operations of the Friday Night Market was executed. On February the fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, the tender one was executed and then extended the term for an additional year. As directed by council at the April eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh staff negotiated a new contract with DL Friday Night Market that was subsequently approved along October the twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three. The new agreement had uh certain changes in it. As far as the the new flat rate, there was a revised market boundary and some other minor operational changes. This has been a very successful event for a number of years, and we've realized a lot of benefits in the community. With the current agreement being set to expire on November the fourth, uh excuse me, November the fifteenth of this year. Staff has reviewed the contract language, made some modifications to ensure the agreement is up to date and compliant with current requirements. And I included the draft agreement as part of your packet with track changes enabled, so you can see all of the uh proposed changes to the agreement. And uh with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that council may have regarding Friday Night Market Board and updated.
Nothing further.
I have uh, I think we'll be wanting to make a public comment on this item. If none of the sections is now closed. Uh what's
No, it's a code, it's an applied three.
Second.
Keep a motion from Mayor Proton Flores, second from Councilmember Saros, Councilmember Villarreal.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Serna. abstained. Motion carries four to one abstained.
Long to um actually, item eleven point four, really economic development, maybe member selection. By me.
Yeah, so um as part of the staff report, I have attached um the applications that we received for the boards, commissions, and committees' applications. Uh we did only receive eight, one, five, I believe. However, an attached are two that are ineligible as they do live outside city limits, and they did not um specify that they worked um within city limits. So we only have three that are actually for consideration. Um the first one is Norberto Galindo, and um the next one is Suzanne Gibson's parents. And then we have Dr. Henry Golladay, so those are the three. There are a couple of different routes, seeing that we only got three and you're wanting five total, we could um open the application period up again, we could table the item, or we could select those three, and we could do a combination, we could open it up, select whatever you decide. Um but that's the three that we have.
Yeah, uh question on the eligibility, so since some of the residents or applicants that reside outside the city limits, they can't serve, is that in our charter, or is that just a new application?
That was in the bylaws that was passed when we established, so we could amend that, we just have to bring the bylaws back.
Okay, well, the only reason I said that is on there was one one candidate who ex uh lived like an expert, and I found him on there, and I think he did, I looked maybe on an outside perspective. Uh which like he
Just work with the finger if you work for.
Which one is that?
It was all Matthew.
Oh, my ground.
My ground, yeah. Yeah, oh.
Okay, yeah, if he uh
Kind of to see well an outside perspective of another city, uh where you mentioned, yeah, you mentioned the bird.
Yeah, so it's in the bylaws, um but we could, if if it's council direction, we could amend the bylaws at a um future meeting.
What do you think?
He doesn't work for Lindsayo.
I didn't see that he worked in Lindsay. Well, his home address is Lindsay, but I don't know.
I think it's in the county. I know one of them was like in Foneyville, I don't remember which one it was, and then one was kind of in the foothills.
So so making
But it's not city limits, I think.
If we reopen the application process and they apply, we could always make an ending later on.
For the bylaws? Yeah, but if we've already selected the committee, then we would have to do like a new committee selection with the new bylaws, I would assume.
Can we just amend the bylaws for next meeting and then revisit this item?
Yeah, but would we want to reopen the application period or just table it?
I'd say, I'd say, are we open enough to keep their tenant applications?
Yeah, they would.
Just to assure that uh maybe max two could be processed from the city. Every state.
Yeah, so it's whatever direction you guys provide, I'll.
All right, I imagine you want the city, if it's economic development for the city.
A limit of number of people outside of the city?
No, I say reopen the application process and let's let's see what we have to choose from that.
Wait, wait, I don't understand. Can you clarify?
Uh.
Can you clarify? I didn't, I
Okay, so we have three applicants, right? We're gonna reopen the process so that we have more applicants. Once we establish that we have enough for that committee, then we can go through the third one.
I understand, uh your point on, so what I was saying is um I'd like to see maybe uh one or two people from outside the city to give us some idea of what's going on around or outside the city, so for example, Matthew Monroe. It's like he has great experience, he just doesn't live within city limits. Well, maybe he'll give us some good ideas as to which one can other cities that we've been talking here.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts?
My concern in the bylaws, if we keep on changing the bylaws for every single thing that we have to vote on, it's why do we even have bylaws?
Any other thoughts?
We say open it up.
With council's consent, I want to say reopen the application process.
Um, it says up to five, was the necessity say five? But does this mean that we're waiting until we get the five or more before we begin and how long is it going to wait? Do you have to be putting a deadline to it? Because also if we're not putting deadlines and people are not interested and they're not.
They're applying. So there was a deadline for this last one. I believe it was September twenty-fifth was the deadline and that way we had time to prepare. Yeah.
So we're setting a deadline this time of?
Yeah, we had one last time too, so it, it's council direction, I would suggest a deadline. And that way we know like when we'll take it back to council as well.
Yes, I agree.
And it's up to five.
Yeah, our bylaws says, it says five, but you wouldn't have to select all five tonight, that's why the, the action says up to.
Were they interviewed? Or they just, the applications?
No, they were not interviewed. I mean, that's something that we can look into at the next meeting, that we bring this back to, if you did want to interview them, I could email them and ask them to be here. Um, let's.
They have like, how, well, how was your application?
Uh, it was put on Facebook, it was posted on our bulletin board here, and then it's actually just a link on our website. It's a very simple form, name, address, um, if you don't live in city limits, it does ask you for your business address. Um, and then a quick excerpt of like your experience, so it's very simple. I mean, I could pass out flyers there, something easy.
Just, you know, just to get enough people to apply, and I'm assuming this time around if they don't apply. You know, we already have the information out, it's definitely coming around, so if we keep pushing it out, we're never going to start.
Right. Yeah, that's valid.
Uh, one question, Megan, uh, do you know where, so you said one of them lived in Tonyville?
Yeah, when I looked up the addresses, um, they're redacted on here, I'm all looking for them. One of them was in the foothills and one was in Tonyville, but I don't remember which was which.
I really think we should all reconsider, cause I mean, just because they're not within the city limits, doesn't mean they don't live in shock here. Uh, so I'm assuming if they live slightly outside city limits, they're still shocked here, maybe their kids come to school here.
Something similar that the city of Teleri does for planning commission, um, I believe it's planning, don't put me on that. They do sphere of influence, which includes the unincorporated areas.
Yeah.
Up to a certain distance, I believe, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, remember Tonyville?
Yeah, they're, they're probably coming here.
This, this kid probably goes over there, but shocks here. If he wants to be part of the committee, I, I say why not, it's within the sphere of influence. Uh, we do have county islands everywhere in the city.
Yeah.
Um, just like that.
Also, one thing you could do is compromise the boundaries of the Lindsay Miller Drive School District. That's possible.
Without changing the bylaw?
Have to look at the way the bylaws read. Uh, we want the city attorney to weigh in on that, so.
Yeah, my guess is we'd so often live in the bylaws, but I, I haven't looked into, I don't have them in front of me, so I wouldn't know, but I, I would think you have to live by law. Especially if they say you have to live or work within city limits.
I could get them to.
We, we could also table this in terms of getting everything to order. Bylaws for one, just guys, where we're at there as well.
So, we could also, I mean, up to council, we could open it up for more applications and also maybe put it far enough out that we have time to research, like put the deadline out, I mean, just so that we can at least have it open.
It's still not, it's pretty hard for us, so give people options to find.
It's just changing a few parts of the language, right, on the bylaw? Yeah, you would just, you would just say instead of, um, you must be within live within city limits, you must live within the sphere of influence or within the Lindsay vital digital boundary. It would be like a three-word change, basically.
Why don't, why don't we, uh, go ahead and do that and extend the deadline, we have more time to. I motion to extend the deadline.
Still need to take public.
Now that discussion is over, we have a public comment on the side. Here again, uh, this section is closed. I motion to extend the deadline.
Do you know to when? Or you have like a timeframe you want me to, just like a month maybe, or a month and a half?
A month.
A month, yeah, a month to.
Okay.
I motion to extend the deadline one month.
So we have a motion from Mayor Serna, second from Councilmember Saros, Councilmember Villarreal. Aye, Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Flores.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to extend the deadline, thank you.
Oh, Megan, do we need a motion to bring back the bylaws or revisit the bylaws?
Um, I, or a consensus would be fine as well.
Moving down to item number point five, operations, we make an agreement for those sectors, uh, so that it appears so.
Thank you, Mayor, for the numbers. Hi, this item is for an operation and management, um, sorry, maintenance agreement for a conveyor bridge owned and operated by Porter Rose Citrus. The project is located in the existing city's parking facility. The, only one of the properties has an address, it's at two zero one South, to Prior Avenue. The conveyor bridge crosses over West Lewis Street. Porter Rose Citrus, uh, asked the city to make improvements to their existing conveyor bridge. They signed it to me as a second story, so they just want to increase, uh, capacity for the city. And in doing so, we realized that we didn't have an existing operations and maintenance agreement in place. And because it does cross over city right away, we did want to protect the city's interests. Uh, to make sure that we, the city wouldn't be responsible, legally or financially for anything related to this conveyor bridge. In order for this to be approved, a building permit would be required and an improvement permit. This is just a picture of the existing bridge situation, idea of how it operates at this time. As far as I know, we don't have engineer drawings at this point, but as far as I know, the um, width of the bridge wouldn't change, just the height of the bridge. And they would be required as part of the building permit process to submit engineer drawings, so you can ensure that is. So the agreement is quite long, but in general, the point is to outline the responsibilities of the owner to maintain, repair, and service the conveyor bridge. It also provides an indemnif- indemnification clause or to protect the city of any legal or financial obligations. The agreement also, um, requires regular yearly annual or year, um, sorry, annual inspections of the bridge. And these inspection reports must be submitted to the city within thirty days. The agreement also allows the city to access any part of the encroachment area or even areas on the property owner's property that are part of the conveyor bridge so that they can inspect the bridge at any time. And as well as any records related to the bridge, so they can go onto the property, um, without, if needed, in front of our business. Once the agreement is executed and reported, it cannot be canceled unless both parties agree to it, or the city determines that is there's a couple, couple reasons, either we need the encroachment area or it's become detrimental to public health and interest in safety and welfare of the city. This project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under two separate sections, both existing facilities and new construction or conversion of small structures. And staff approves approval of the resolution. This resolution authorizes the city manager to execute the agreement once all requirements are met, so they would need to have approval of the encroachment permit and the building permit and sign the opportunity maintenance agreement before they begin construction. You have any questions, Megan, I'll be answering.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, um, just so that I understand this right, they're asking to, why did the conveyor upgrade?
They want to increase the height.
The height?
So they called it a second story, but again, we haven't seen engineer drawings, they could change. You know, based on how this middle comes in, how our engineers review it and, and turn it back, but that's how it was explained to me at the time.
And, and my other question is, right now, if the way, the way it's sit right now, we're going to enter into an agreement in that they're responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that conveyor upgrade.
Correct.
And we're gonna put that in writing so that we can inspect it annually and they're allowed to get back to us within thirty days.
Yes, so they are responsible for hiring a licensed contractor themselves to provide an inspection report and give that to the city within thirty days of that inspection, but it also gives the city the right to enter it and perform their own inspections as well at any time. And inspection with the reference, so we did have the city attorney and our city engineer and, uh, let's say about five other staff members review the agreement and everyone was in agreement that it protected the city as we were discussed.
Is it currently being used?
Yes, and they are in a very big hurry, so I, I believe they're in, um, citrus of, or maybe they're hurling it now, I'm not sure if anyone knows, but they did say that they want to use it this season, so they were uh, moving, they moved very quickly, they thought they would just be getting a building permit. But then when we realized that the city's interest were not protected, we asked them to provide this operation for maintenance agreement to us and that we would come to an agreement on it, you know, with some revisions.
So this is our custom city anything with?
No, it also outlines the costs, um, all the costs that the owner is responsible for. The inspections, all the maintenance, the repair, their own permitting, their own drawings, and then it also, if, if if there was to, if legal action was to be brought forward in relation to this bridge, it falls on the.
And will they be like, stop, um, limit the traffic, you know, like limited in that area?
I believe during construction, it would need to be at some point. Unless the, maybe almost the towers wouldn't be touched at all, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but that would be part of the encroachment permit and the building permit. That would be reviewed and they would be responsible for the cost of traffic control or, um, usually a contractor will hire a traffic control company to provide that with signage and. Well, when it's working, oh, yeah, once it's working.
Yeah.
You just drive right under it.
I'm just saying, during the time of.
Oh, yeah, during construction, there might be certain periods, so that would be applied there, but once it's in operation, that's the reason they do the bridge, so that they don't have to.
And that's not a high traffic road. It, it's more for the, the boys or.
Right. We just wanted to make sure if anything was, if anything was to fall or break or you, you just want to make sure that the city would be, because you're in the city street, you're in the city right away. And it's one of those streets, well, on Sweet Prior, that's the road that's also closed, right, to the public?
Boy, that would be a short road.
Those two were down.
Yeah.
That would be to the corner.
So you said, um, with the there being.
Yes. During the season that they use.
So when that is going on, do we, is the city liable? So we're right now, okay.
We couldn't find anything, but, and as Brian mentioned, there's, there were trips to the basement.
No, yeah, I.
We did search a lot of.
I wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yeah, we weren't able to find anything in place. Otherwise, we could have, you know, evac out of that existing group, but we didn't have.
It's not because they're, they're increasing, there's other things, or that's all it, it was, um.
So in planning, we like to say we get opportunities at certain points in time, so if, uh, a use is expanded or changed or a new building is, or even renovations, that's our opportunity to bring things up to code or to you know, examine them for their current compliance, and so this was an opportunity for us to protect the city's interests that as far as we know, we can find, we record that in the past. Like things that were done, not quite there, maybe they were, but we don't have it.
Actually, we're gonna find a lot more, I mean. I mean, perfectly said, it's, you know, you find things as they come and they happen, so you're.
Thank you.
Any questions? Question, concern, one important, from, from the side. Now, this section is closed, do I have a motion to approve? You agree?
Yeah.
I'll say it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Sanchez, a second from Councilmember Saros, Councilmember Villarreal. Aye. Mayor Proton Flores.
Aye.
Mayor Serna.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to approve the item.
If the section is not closed, we'll be on to number point six. Uh, work authorization in the construction, state needs services. By Monis Simondosa.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor, and Mayor Proton, and council members. Uh, my name is Monis Simondosa, and I'm gonna be asking council, uh, to approve, uh, JDI number eleven point six, asking council to uh, approve the work authorization order for QK Incorporated for the construction staking services, uh, at the Albu. Um, as you might recall, we have been working, making a lot of progress on the Albu project, uh, but coordination coordination for the staking services, um, has been delayed, uh, because of scheduling conflicts and a bit of oversight on our part. Uh, to avoid any further, uh, delays, we selected QK, uh, which is already familiar with the project site. Uh, since they are the ones that did the topographic survey. Uh, with this, they should be able to start, uh, almost immediately upon approval. Uh, after reviewing the two proposals from Four Creeks and QK, um, we weighed our requirements and found that QK's proposal was more comprehensive and ultimately, uh, offered more value to overall project. Um, even though Four Creeks offered, uh, more competitive costs, um, we decided to choose Q, QK because of their scope of services uh, and JXV. Um, the total cost of these services, uh, is sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars, um, and this covered in the project, but um, I'm asking for council approval to move forward with this work and keep the project on schedule. Uh, that concludes our requests, are there any findings?
So you're saying, are we okay today or then start tomorrow?
Uh, they, they, they have all the resources they, they need, um, they have all the info, all the data, all the times. Uh, so theoretically, yeah, they could, if it was approved, but of course, you know, they're not gonna go out tomorrow. But they could, they could.
Was this mon- is this money already built in the budget?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And, um, just like I said, so instead of Four Creeks, what would be QK, right?
I support.
All that, questions?
Thank you for your so negative wording, I thought that, and your honesty, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monis.
Oh, hold on, so one thing we just want to clarify is there's Four Creeks is still the construction manager for the project, this is for the staking. So I just wanted to clarify kind of your question, that nothing has changed with that.
So we're paying for it?
It was, so this is, so this is still built into the budget, the staking is, the reason why, on, uh, like Monisio said is QK did a lot of the design services, so they did the topological map and have all the raw data that is necessary to do the stake, so rather than increase another company to then have to So rather than introduce another company to then have to pull topological material to then do the work product, they staff looked at it and, what we're right. But I just wanted to clarify the point of Four Creeks is still the construction manager.
Okay, hopefully they don't get mixed up.
Any other comments or questions? Put it under the section up to, up your comment, and we will shoot a couple of comments forward. And now the section is closed, we have motion to approve.
Motion to approve, eleven point six.
I second.
We have a motion from Mayor Protim Flores, second from Mayor Serna, Councilmember Villarreal?
Aye.
Councilmember Saros?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right. Hey, Tom, you simple, you're tough guys. All right, moving on to discussion items. Item three point one, offer keenness for developing city-owned vector properties, city of our payment policy.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is another item that was brought forward from the last meeting, was kept with the last meeting. As we have recently discussed, the new development and redevelopment opportunities around the city, it's important for us to consider what vacant properties the city might have available. Currently, there are two such properties that have been vacant for a number of years, and they've been of particular interest lately. With renewed focus on downtown revitalization, staff is seeking counsel correction on, on these two particular properties. The first one being the vacant lot at the corner of Honolulu and Elmwood. There are actually like three pieces of property here, just to give you a little background. In twenty twenty-one, there was a fire that severely damaged about half a block area on the corner of Elmwood and Honolulu, destroying four businesses. Later, there were two hundred fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds that were allocated for the debris cleanup and removal. And then in July of twenty twenty-three, the council approved the downtown Lindsay demolition cleanup project, awarding a contract of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to Resource Environmental. That project was completed in twenty twenty-three. September of twenty twenty-three. In February of twenty twenty-four, city staff met with Christar Development LLC, which expressed interest in purchasing the property. Christar, as you may recall, proposed developing a one hundred and eight residential unit complex in three commercial spaces. However, in the year twenty twenty-four, the sale was put on hold in the outcome of the water feasibility study. The property was later appraised by Dennis L. Schneider in April of this year. That appraisal concluded with the current market value of the property is three hundred ninety thousand dollars.
For the downtown, right?
For the downtown. Christar has recently reached out to the city to renew the discussions. They are still very interested in pursuing this project. And they are just waiting for the city to make a decision in terms of what, what council's direction for that particular property is. It's my understanding that at the time, Christar bought the project for council consideration, the county, the project was well received. I couldn't find much documentation other than that. I don't think there was any formal action taken. The other property is the two eighty-four Hermosa Street property, acquired from the bank of Sierra after foreclosure. Property was formerly a local church, it's been vacant for an extended period of time, with boarded-up windows, recent fire damage to the interior of the structure. There has been interest from certain developers for converting the structure into a quirtzer food establishment. There's also reportedly been discussions with self-help enterprises in CSET regarding remodeling the structure and using it for office space for public benefit purposes. As I indicated earlier in my report to council, I did receive a call yesterday, actually had a message called her back from Clara Calhoun of CSET, and they had apparently had discussions with prior administration about potentially using that property for offices here at Lindsay, she did indicate that there is a potential for CSET's during grant funding to rehabilitate the property, the best direction that the council decided to go. So all of that being said, both properties, as they are surplus property, they are subject to the surplus land act requirements. I did a lot of digging, a lot of research on both these properties, and there's just not a lot of good information on file. But I did, was able to confirm that both properties have gone through that process, confirmed that with our city attorney. They have been listed, they've been advertised. And so once that process is complete, the properties can be sold or rehabilitated for community benefit purpose. We would just have to get the approval from ACB to move in that direction once we decided on the specific project for each one of the properties. And so with that, council, I'm really looking for a direction on how council would like to proceed with both of these properties. Is it your desire to bring Christar back in and do another presentation on the development? Are you satisfied with what they have previously presented? And would you like staff to move forward with trying to arrange a purchase deal with Christar? You have other ideas for the property, and then with regards to the Hermosa property, just looking for council's direction on how to proceed with that location as well.
I personally would like Christar to bring us an update at where they're at. Because the last time when they came, it was very you know, they had just started trying to look for people to help them out on that, ideas, stores, they've been brought on some restaurants in from my side. So I don't know where they're at. So I would really like them to come back in and give us another presentation.
Okay, we can reach that.
Yeah, as far as the church goes, I would, my personal opinion is CSET is one of the best organizations there is, and their ability to, to help the community is one of the best throughout their county. So that would be my, my view on that.
I'm going to follow up with what you're saying about, was Tristar or Christar?
Christar.
Christar. I, I like the idea that they presented, I'd like to see where they're at in that process. Maybe after further discussion on, on their dates and then what we're looking at as far as plans. Would like to continue that discussion. CSET as well, I, I agree with Flores, or I think CSET is great work with the unions, I know self-help is one of the organizations as part of production, I'd like to see what they do with Lindsay, for Lindsay.
Is that the, the two eighty Hermosa, has it been appraised?
I don't believe it has.
Okay.
Okay, um, so on the downtown, I also liked where the conversation was going with Christar. If they are invited, if they could crack down on their financing tactics, because I know they were saying that they were going to buy for public loans, private loans, private investors, it was just wasn't solid for me. You know, so if they're invited back, maybe I'd like to get a clear idea, because they did offer, you know, renderings, but they're just renderings. They weren't a core plan, there wasn't nothing solid, I like that idea though. So I'd like to continue the conversation. I would also like to maybe open it up to other investors for the downtown, not just go with Christar right now. So maybe promote it on our local news outlets, if there's like a national database, just to see what else is out there. What's its zone does right now, is it commercial district? Or is it mixed use? But if it's mixed use, we can incorporate housing and, and commercial spaces. And also, if there's like a high limit, what the, what the density is for that, too, I'd like some information on that, too. That's where I'm at for the downtown. For the Hermosa Street, I was up, or two eighty-four, I was also wondering if it's been appraised. And if any, there's local interest beyond CSET, I do like CSET, too, I really like CSET, but if there's any local interest, see, maybe what plans they could present. And I was also wondering what the zone type is for that property. It was a church, I don't know what church it was, but maybe also mixed use. And that's, that's where I'm at for the two properties. Am I good?
Yeah. I think we're getting a little bit of a mixed direction here, just, just for clarity. How the council would proceed. Sounds like we have a consensus of bringing Christar back for a second hearing presentation.
I don't think, it was a presentation for me, it was in concrete or anything like, it was a, yeah, it was a, you know.
I wasn't here for it, so I'd like to see.
Me too.
Well, we can definitely continue the conversation to that. Yeah, I think part of the difficulty is that they don't currently own the property, so you don't there, it's hard to do something that would, yes.
And have you reached out?
Yes.
Yeah, but you know, I tried looking them up, like, some mid-pass properties, past projects, and I couldn't find any. That's why I was so on edge, like, I wasn't willing to just hand over a downtown property with high value with no solid concrete plans. So if they come back to really present us data, present us facts, past projects, maybe past audits, just to see what we are as an independent investor.
Just to be clear, we wouldn't hand the property over to them, maybe the purchase of.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said, that's, I meant, thank you for clarifying that.
And for me, as far as the property on the mobile side, would like to get a benefit of two things. So I think they said they would like to come between something, I don't know, two companies to offer. But we said they have a lot of variety of programs. And that's what I like about CSET, they're, they're kind of a range, they have their programs, helping people with employment, helping, they build, any programs that they have over there, they help and they connect, they make those connections, also to the community. So I would like to see that for the, for the community, have some type of office here. I know they used to be here mainly at one point in time, and it was really nice, we didn't have to spend, you know, the community doesn't have to go outside of the city to look for help, it's here in the city, so I would like to see something like that.
We have a consensus, right? We have a consensus?
I think so.
I'd like to open this up for public comment, seeing if we have any people want to share. If none, side is not closed, we have a motion to approve. Our motion to approve.
It's a discussion, so I have the consensus down.
Plus?
Well, hopefully you have that information, right, Brandon?
On Oxford.
Well, from again.
Oxford.
Yeah.
I have a request. When it comes to organizations that are very cool and on progress, the RITookoff, the OBF, I, I think it's tedious for them to keep coming back every year, every year, year, maybe we can discuss, maybe do some permanent, that they don't have to come back. Maybe, maybe in fees, I don't know, it's just my thoughts.
Well, also for, it's also for the hand, right, the permitting stuff, don't they have the, um, anyways? Should those streets out?
Maybe, maybe we can authorize the city manager to make that decision, just like this, imagine making decisions on the TMC by our hands.
You could do that, you know, the, the events tend to change over time, as I say, bring in different vendors. Sometimes the events grow. So the street closures change, different dynamics to each event that it requires some differences on the permit. But if we wanted to give the city manager staff authorization to approve those changes.
Or just reset calendar.
Just to add something real quick on to that, so one of the things that I've actually done this last week is I've heard that complaint before. I met with OBF probably Monday, Tuesday, and I met with the RITookoff people today, of doing kind of a checklist, and a lot of these things are kind of year-to-year, and rather than them having to go through the actual schedule to packet, to pick out what they need, we already for RITookoff went over kind of a checklist for them. So it would still come in. What I've done is I've changed any policy, still come in front of council, but it would be more like a checklist, so they know exactly, you know, on these legacy events that are year-to-year, is they know exactly what it is, like for RITookoff, they actually buy the paper copy of the twenty twenty-three packet, and we sat down, went through it, and we're waiting on one, one thing, but everything else is all covered. So for RITookoff and OBF, those are covered, and we would extend that to the other hot, kind of something, so just worth that, that in.
You're killing it, Ryan, you're killing it, you could do it honestly.
Is there any other feature items? And now I'm assuming you've got, there, you're in the meeting?